Alrighty.
Ain't no problem.
Uh, Mayor doesn't help, so it's.
I see, I see you want.
I have no problem with that, I didn't know.
That's what I, I could.
Yeah. So everyone gets.
Yeah. Well, you might see some or you might not.
The key's gonna be.
Look like you won.
Yeah, I've read through it.
Yeah.
Could be good, could be bad.
Give me a fiddle.
Look like there's a lot of.
Give me a.
If I had an M S. The only problem is you have to get pissed off because of the class of the line.
I coached his, uh, I coached his kids.
Well, he's getting a job.
I grew up a little bit just like.
I'll be chief card for you.
You know, Lenny, when I grew up, I wanted to just like. When I grew up, I wanted to.
They were pretty good.
There is some hard.
I'm.
Having one.
Four and fifty-one stars.
Everyone's wearing.
Do that.
Did you really? Good.
Let me guess who's with with Darrell and J R.
Where'd you play?
I was closing down.
Really?
Yeah, it was getting.
Had the way we would back to.
Yeah. For being a pitcher. We made up the fairway a little bit there. Is that a recorder?
No, I'm swaying on my.
Man.
They, shoot.
Is that right? He's getting wild, he's about to lose, did he?
No.
Talked to him, it's terrible.
It's hard to get to.
Yeah.
Man, that's what keep him quiet tonight.
You say put him up here? You say put him up here?
There's a recorder right here. Yeah.
I want Brian up here, we want him down there by you.
Kinda like Brian.
The center.
I'm setting his seat.
Don't get in it.
Looks like he's a rock star when he's on the line.
I'd like to bring to order the Lawrenceburg Board of Works meeting, uh, February third, twenty twenty. Roll call, please.
Board member Tony Abbott.
Here.
Board member Tommy Roulette.
Present.
Police chief David Snyder.
Present.
Fire chief Johnny Tremaine.
Here.
EMS director Rick Clark.
Here.
City attorney Dale Welton.
Here.
City coordinator Brian Messmore.
Here.
President Kelly Milan absent and myself.
Mr. Milan is sick, he's got the flu bug going around. Okay, uh, move on to announcements, do I got announcements? Alright, here and none, I'll take a vote for approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
So moved.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Minutes passed. Committee reports. Fire.
Oh, I passed out everybody, the, uh, incidents we had, uh, for the month of January, we had seventy total. Uh, they're broken down between the fire and EMS, uh, calls we went on with the response times. Um, also, I had passed out a, I'd gotten, uh, quotes on a new, uh, staff vehicle for myself, um, during budget talks last year, we were able to put the money, budget the money, so, uh, I went to Hagford and Kelsey Chevrolet. The major, uh, automotive and, uh, companies had come out with a special service vehicle, which puts bigger alternator and makes it more, uh, withstand the abuse of what public safety's gonna do. So I went that route on the quotes. The first two quotes is, uh, first one's Kelsey at thirty-four, one oh four thirty-five. And, uh, the second one is Hagford's version of that is thirty-eight, two seventy-seven. Um, I did go ahead and have Hag quote just a plain truck, and that's the last quote you have on the third page. But I would ask for permission just to go ahead with the Kelsey Chevrolet.
That is the lowest of the bids and unless it's still lower than the other Hag bid for the regular truck, which.
I have one question, Johnny.
Yes.
Or Chief Tremaine, I should say. Do, did the truck itself have an inverter in it? If you need a one-ten?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, they do.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, we have the chief's recommendation, is in, anyone wanna make a motion?
So moved.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead and get the one from Kelsey Chevrolet.
Thank you. All I have.
Police Dave.
Thank you, your honor, just like to let the board know, um, putting on what I said in the last meeting about the replacing of the clerk. Um, the union bid was posted to replace the clerk, we did have one person in the city sign it, that person is a police officer. He had, uh, given his eight months notice. He's gonna be leaving later in a year, so with the board's approval, I'd just like to go ahead and start moving forward with moving him into the role as clerk and, you know, going back to the same poll, it's within a year of the last top five candidates we had the last time we hired.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion, and I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Anything else?
No further.
EMS.
Thank you, sir. Um, I passed out January stats. Should be in front of you, if you have any questions on that. Um, I wanted to report that Johnson Controls placed the, uh, chiller, the new chiller unit behind Station four hundred today, so they'll be hooking that up, probably next couple days, and then they're gonna be working on the pump that we talked about. Um, and I just wanna remind the city departments and any of the citizens, if they find any used needles, uh, to call dispatch will come and dispose of them. I'm still keeping records of, of how many we find and where they're at, that sort of thing, so, um, that's all I have.
Now, as far as finding needles, has that kinda slowed down lately, it seems like?
It has, and, uh, so have our overdose rooms, as a matter of fact.
Great, great. Something's working. Any other questions? Alright, here and then, we'll move on to new business, and the first thing is on, Mayor Milan's gonna present the Reach Alert contract, and since he's not here, suggest.
I entertain a motion that we table this until the mayor is present.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Tabled, until the next meeting. Anything else under new business you wanna bring up or anything?
I have nothing.
Alright, and we want the old business, Mike Clark, Ludlow Hill Park Playground Bid Opening.
Okay, thank you, we have, we received two bids for the Ludlow Hill Park Playground Rehab, and we're going to open them tonight, read the amount, and then I'm gonna ask you guys to place it under advisement, let us go through them, make sure they meet the specs, and then we'll bring it back in front of you at the next meeting for a recommendation on what, who to award to. Okay, the first one is from Snyder Recreation. Okay. And the lump sum amount is three hundred and nineteen thousand eighty-seven dollars even. And the second bid that we had submitted is from Sinclair Recreation. Say, do they even have the bid package in there? Okay, here it is. And their bid, lump sum bid, is three hundred and seventeen thousand nine hundred dollars. And they have an addendum noted, so I'll get through that once it's taken under advisement and I get a chance to go through and review both of them.
Okay, so you'll review them and come back recommendation, or?
Yeah, at the next, it'll be back on the agenda under old business at the next meeting.
You wanna make a motion for that, Tommy, to?
I'll make a motion that we allow you to review them and bring them back up to the next meeting.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye. One question I would have.
Yes.
Do you, uh, take the person that's on the committees for like the parks and playgrounds and have them involved in this at all?
We actually had a citizen committee that worked with the mayor's office on this. Um, so, uh, that's how they attacked this one.
Gotcha.
Uh, after the mayor's office and the, uh, citizen committee came up with a plan, then it was handed off to myself and Mr. Todd, and we generated the bid package, the specifications, and got it bid out.
You're actually gonna do that with every park?
Correct. So I have.
Anything else under old business? Here and none, we'll review and discussion of claims for board approval.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve the claims.
So moved? I mean, second, all in favor?
Aye.
That passed. Uh, I'm gonna go back on one thing, on the, uh, fire vehicle, uh, should we forward that to council?
Shouldn't have to.
That's right, it's in the budget, wasn't it, so we don't have to, okay, it's in the budget, alright.
That's a good question, though.
Alright, motion for adjournment, then.
So moved.
Second, all in favor? Alrighty. Parks and playgrounds, soon as everybody's seated. Alright, bring to order the city Lawrenceburg Parks and Playground Meeting, uh, roll call, please.
Board member Tony, Tony Abbott.
Here.
Uh, board member Justin Nobert.
Yes, sir.
Board member Tommy Roulette.
Present.
Board member Lenny Fryman.
Present.
Board member Brett Bondurant.
Yes, sir.
City attorney Dale Welton.
Here.
City coordinator Brian Messmore.
Here.
President Kelly Milan absent and myself.
Alright, do we have any announcements from the board? Okay, here and no announcements, uh, take a motion for the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting at twelve second. Or do we have two of them to do, one-six, do them separately?
I retain a motion that we approve them both.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
That motion passed, so do I have minutes to approve them? Or is that good for approving them or just, was that the motion to?
To approve both, both sets of minutes, correct.
Okay, alright.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Alright. Then, moving on to new business, and this is another Mayor Milan, the city rental properties, and since he's not here, I'll take a motion to table.
I'll make the motion to table it.
Uh, first, I have a second.
Second.
Second by Lenny, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Seeing nothing else under new business, we'll move on to old business, and there's nothing there. So review and discussion of claims for board approvals, take a motion for the claims to be paid.
I make a motion that we pay the.
Alright, motion by Lenny, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Brett, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Motion by Tommy, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Brett, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You mean we're done?
Yep, done with that. Everybody stand.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the city council meeting, Lawrenceburg, February third, twenty twenty, um, roll call, please.
Councilperson Tony Abbott.
Here.
Councilperson Justin Nobert.
Yes, sir.
Councilperson Tommy Roulette.
Present.
Councilperson Lenny Fryman.
Here.
Councilperson Brett Bondurant.
Yes, sir.
Police chief David Snyder.
Present.
Fire chief Johnny Tremaine.
Here.
EMS director Rick Clark.
Here.
City coordinator Brian, or city attorney Dale Welton.
Here.
Uh, city coordinator Brian Messmore.
Here.
City court judge Joe Johns.
He sends his regrets, he couldn't make it tonight.
Uh, mayor Kelly Milan absent and myself.
Alrighty. Having any announcements? Number of board reports, uh, first up would be streets, alleys, and curbs, that's me, I have nothing to report. Finance Brett.
Good.
Good. Parks and playgrounds.
Yeah, I was gonna say, um, I did speak with Mr. Seymour regarding, um, some interest in, in using the sports complex for four H this year, and, um, we're gonna have them, we should have some, some firm dates on that, Mr. Seymour, is that accurate, we have one, we have one firm date that they're wanting to use it for June twenty-seventh?
Yeah, four H.
And then is that the, is that, would that be the only date that they're looking, or we potentially have in a second?
They wanna have two, but they haven't.
So.
They're gonna take it one at a time.
Okay, alright, well, I'll report back.
Okay, now is this for using the fairgrounds?
Correct.
Is this for using the fairgrounds property? No?
It's for using the, uh,
Sports complex.
The replace, the replacement of the horse stables, it, when the sports complex was gonna come to town.
Uh-huh.
And we thought about moving the, and then we put the arena there at the, uh, sports complex, the castings.
Okay.
That's where they would be at.
Alright, and they'll be to another meeting, alrighty. Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Alrighty, uh, fire, Mr. Roulette.
Have nothing to report.
Alrighty. Okay, as everybody had a chance to look at the minutes of the previous meeting, I'll take a motion to approve or?
So moved.
Second it.
Motion by Mr. Nobert, second by Mr. Roulette, all in favor?
Aye.
Minutes passed. Committee reports, fire.
Uh, all I have is I passed out the incident reports for January, you have any questions, just let me know.
Alrighty. Mr. Snyder, please.
Yeah, thank you, your honor, uh, busy month last month, we, uh, fielded one thousand twenty-six calls, the police department did, um, just in the month of January alone, so that's on average, so about what we do per year, a little heavy, about ten thousand calls a year is what we take out of Lawrenceburg, um, which is about three thousand calls behind the, the county. Um, county's got sixty-five thousand people, Lawrenceburg's got fifty-five hundred, six thousand, um, we stay pretty busy in the county seat. So, um, that's pretty good, it's just been busy, um, the, the, uh, public safety night for later in the year has been scheduled, I think we got the cit, the civic park acquired on, on September twenty-eighth, I think is the date. Um, looking forward to that again this year, Jacob Jump puts that on with the K nine, went, went over real well last year. Um, looking forward to that again this year, so, he put that in, I think we got the civic park booked, as far as I know.
Great.
That's all I got.
That all?
That's it.
Hmm, ready. Okay, city court, uh, the judge is not here, so we'll move on to new business. Kim Rudicel, donation to the C O L donation committee.
Good evening, um, I'll turn the mic over to my wife here in a second, this is my wife Kim Rudicel, I'm Dave Rudicel. Um, first of all, congratulations to, uh, the new, uh, council. Um, and said, I'm Dave, this is my wife Kim, we run the Lawrenceburg Speedway. Um, if you haven't ever been, we welcome you to come over, um, get ahold of us anytime, we'd love to get your input and feel on, uh, any ideas you have at the Speedway or you wanna discuss, so, um, I'm gonna turn the mic over to my wife Kim, and she's gonna give her some things.
Thank you, so every year we try and come and, uh, give you a rundown of how the season went and some of our community giving campaigns, which were very, um, which is a huge part of what we do at the Lawrenceburg Speedway. So, uh, this year at the races, we had over five community drives collecting over forty-eight hundred items, uh, which consisted of two food drives, a school supplies drive, a pet food and toy drive, as well as our breast cancer awareness event. All of the things, items, and funds collected for those events stayed in Dearborn County, we should try and rotate organizations in different schools, um, to donate those items to. Um, and all of those drives are on the schedule once again in twenty twenty. Uh, we also have what we call our community salute campaign, and we started that campaign about, well, fourteen, fifteen years ago. Um, and it's been, um, quite successful, but that campaign consists of scout night, youth sports night, servicemen and women night, two separate family nights at the races, C D L night, as well as our Pretty in Pink and Dog Days this summer. And all of those nights, um, if you've not seen us promote them, um, they're different nights where these organizations and clubs and groups, um, you know, if they participate, like youth sports night, they wear their uniform, and to the races they get in for free. And it's just our way of trying to get, you know, families and new faces to come out and enjoy the races. Um, also in two thousand nineteen, we made in-kind ticket donations to over twenty-one hundred nonprofit organizations in the tri-state area. It totaled a, um, thirty-three thousand six hundred vouchers and had a total face value of over four hundred ninety-four thousand dollars. And, um, of those donations, we keep, um, a lot of records with them so that we can remarket to those same people. Over sixty percent of them were what we call first-time visitors, and, um, we like to see that because hopefully they come out, they see our city, they have a good time, and, um, make a return visit on their own at some point in the future. So, uh, with all of that being said, we also try and give in our backyard as much as possible, and so, um, we usually like to bring a check to give to the city of Lawrenceburg donation committee, that way you guys can decide how it's spent, so we have that for you guys.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, thank you very much, thank you for the work you do.
Any questions? Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Kim.
Thanks.
Okay, uh, up next is Mayor Milan's for the Reach Alert contract, I'll take a motion to table.
I make a motion that we table this to the next meeting.
Uh, first by Lenny, do I have a second?
Second it.
Second by Mr. Roulette, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed, uh, kiosk, is there any, that's by Mayor Milan too, so I'll take a motion to?
I'll make a motion to table the kiosks.
Motion.
Till next meeting.
Alright, motion by Mr. Bondurant, second by Lenny, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion passed. Tony Aikels, levy enhancement update?
Alright, thanks, thank you, uh, the mayor wanted me to come and kinda give an update to the new council, uh, so I've got some handouts here, I'll just.
Let me take a turn.
Do you have one you could kinda pass to the audience that they could look at, or?
Um, there should be something I filled over, I can't get it, I think I made like ten or so. If not, I can have one here that I can leave as well.
We'll get you covered.
It's not our first rodeo.
Pass it down.
Cowboy up there, huh?
Get it?
Good.
So the, the first one I would call, call your attention to is the one, they're a photo one, it looks like this. Um, reason why I brought this one is because most people, when they, when they ask you, and where's the, where's the project located, uh, so I wanted to bring this. Off to the left-hand side is Ivy Tech, and then you see the top of the parking garage, and then the green area, the grass area, is the area that we're talking about between the parking garage and the, uh, the levee walk. So, um, this is what it looks like today, if you kinda look at the contours, it, it slopes off a good eight or so feet back towards the parking garage. Uh, there are a few stormwater drains, inlets back there to, to take in the stormwater, uh, that, that runs off the side. But what we're looking at is enhancing that green area right there. So the next one I'll have you look at is the actual, the, uh, the renderings, which is the packet of three sheets that I stapled together. Uh, the first one you'll see is just kind of an overhead view of what that would look like, uh, doesn't, doesn't show a whole lot other than, you know, the area. It's really the second sheet that I brought for you to look at, and what we're, uh, what we're planning to do is kinda level off that area back in and make it, make it level, and then to provide, uh, some swings or maybe some picnic tables or sitting areas, maybe even a shelter house depending on, on the, on the budget. Um, one of the things I do wanna call to your attention, if you look in the background, you'll see kind of a fenced area. This is one that, that I'm working on right now to get resolved, um, there are windows into that second level of the, uh, parking garage. Um, the first thought was is we can't shut those windows off, but, uh, what I've been looking at now is we probably can, so we probably won't need that retaining wall, which was pretty expensive, because that retaining wall is gonna be, you know, eight feet tall of concrete, so. Uh, but I do have a call into the core, and I'll get to this here in just a second, but what we're looking at is maybe bringing that soil all the way to the parking garage. Uh, so we don't have, uh, we don't have like a small pedestrian bridge either from the, from the parking, top of the parking lot over to this area, it's just all gonna be soil. It's gonna cut down the cost quite a bit, and, and that way we can maybe have more amenities instead of all the, like I say, you know, eight-foot-tall concrete, uh, retaining wall. The third page just kinda shows that, shows that retaining wall a little bit better, um, and like I said, that's kind of what we're working with the core to see if we can not do. Uh, and that is the third handout I brought to you, and, um, this is what we call a product called Geo Foam. And they're basically large styrofoam blocks that go in place of soil, and there's a couple reasons, one is because we don't have a good way of getting all this soil if we had to take all this dirt up there. You'd have to either bring it up the levee side, uh, or potentially a lot, a lot, you know, a lot of trucks going through the parking garage, which we don't wanna do either. So the thought is, is to use this Geo Foam to bring it up to about, within three feet of grade, and then the top three feet would be soil instead of all eight feet. Um, the core called me back, but I didn't get a chance to talk to him today, I was in a meeting, um, and so I talked to Bonnie Jennings, and her and her group are reviewing it for the last, yeah, probably a month or so, uh, and, and like I said, she, she called me today, but I wasn't at my desk, so I was hoping to have it, to get a chance to call her back, but I didn't make it, so I'm gonna talk to her tomorrow and find out whether or not they're gonna allow us to use this, since it's on the levee. Um, she didn't, they didn't just shut me down, so that's a good sign. Uh, this will also help kind of defray the cost a little bit, because again, we don't have to bring all that soil, you know, up and, and over the levee, which that's all riprap down through there, you know, it's gonna be a lot of soil, and, and, and just a tough way to do it. Um, these styrofoam blocks can be shaped, it's basically just like a hot knife, and they just slice them so they can actually kinda go on and follow that contour down, so it's not like we're gonna have to dig out a lot. We will probably have to put some underdrains in and tie it into those storm inlets that are there to make sure we get surface water off. Uh, other than that, like I say, it's about three feet, two to three feet of soil that we need to sustain the grass, and then from there, uh, if we do like swings or picnic tables, we'll probably put a concrete pad under them, um, to, uh, anchor them down and to hold them down, um, that way we don't have to go too far into the, uh, into the levee, well, not the levee, but the, we don't have to go into the Geo Foam, that foam that way. Um, and so, that's kind of where, where we're at, we haven't gotten into the, a lot of detailed design, just because we wait for the core to kinda give us a, a yea or nay on whether or not we can use this. Uh, like I said, I hope to talk to Bonnie tomorrow. Um, but once we kinda get going on it, you know, we're probably looking at, you know, around three months or so of design, and we can get out to bid. Uh, so hopefully it, this year, probably late summer, early fall, have it maybe, uh, maybe constructed. So with that, I'll open any questions you might have or comments or?
I've got two, let me think of here, the geotherm, uh, blocks.
Yes.
What's the life expectancy on them?
Um, they really don't degrade.
They don't?
Not just, not just by weather. Um, I, my question I have is if, you know, if we had somebody spill gasoline, because gasoline is styrofoam, don't get along. Um, and so I have that question into the, into the manufacturer, of course, with about three feet of soil, you won't have a whole lot that makes it through. Uh, but for most parts, they're stable, uh, they're not reactive, um, you know, they, they don't react to acids and bases and stuff like that, they're pretty much there, they're very dense, they're not like a styrofoam cup that you're probably thinking of, they're, they're denser than that. Uh, they're very strong, compressive-wise, so, um, you know, they're not going to smash down or anything like that.
Somebody gets, something gets on it heavy, it's not gonna?
It's not.
They're gonna make it.
And, and one of the other reasons, I need to bring this up too while we're looking at this, is because when you put all that, if we were to put all that soil against that wall of that garage, that loading is transferred to the wall of the garage, this actually transfers loading straight down. So it's not, I mean, they can go right up next to that wall, so it's not actually pushing against that wall, it's pushing it straight down, uh, which is another reason why, but yeah, you can, uh, you can take heavy equipment on it. Um, not sure you could actually get heavy equipment up there, but it's a pretty, pretty tough area to get to, but.
I know some of these people in Lawrenceburg are pretty in generic, they could, they'll bring cars or something, they'll try to get something up there, so you gotta watch it.
Uh, one of the questions that I, I do get on this is, you know, they are buoyant, but if we get water up that high, then everybody's hurting, um, because, you know, it's on the dry side of the levee.
Yeah, it's over the levee, so we ain't gonna be here.
Yeah, but that's also a reason why we'd look at putting, uh, underdrains or something through there to capture the water that comes through the soil and get it out of there, uh, obviously we don't want standing water underneath of them, so.
Now, the second question, I got the fence going around the, uh, the wall, the retaining wall.
Yes.
How high is that, because?
If we use the styrofoam block, we won't use that fence. Uh, we'll bring, we'll bring this all the way up to the existing concrete wall that's there, so that, that fence goes away too, which is, helps save, saves on cost.
That'd be great, because I'm, I'm worried about kids climbing over that fence and falling down.
Yeah, and I talked to about it with, with Paul and, and the L C D, and, and this is another reason why we said, let's look at this Geo Foam and see if the core will let us do that, because if it does, that trench goes away, that fence goes away, that retaining wall goes away, this, it's straight up or straight next to the wall of the garage, so there's really no, there's really no trench there. It's, it's straight up or straight next to the wall of the garage, so there's really no, there's really no trench there.
Is that Mr. Seymour's idea to do it that way?
Uh, it's actually my structural engineers, but I talked to him about it, and we, and we, we kind of liked the idea, and we thought, well, let's, let's pitch it to the core and, and see, uh, see what we can do.
That's a good idea, if we could do away with that fence, I'd.
Yeah, so do I, there's a lot of cost there in that fence and that retaining wall, so, um, so that's where we're at, um, like I said, I'll get ahold of the core tomorrow and see.
There's, yeah, just as regards to like carbon monoxide, um, blow through from the, um, parking garage, I don't know if it's, if that's going to limit some of that, um,
We would actually.
airflow that would come through there.
Yeah, well, we'd actually, uh, would block those windows up, and what you have is you have, you basically have three sides that have openings on it. And per the code, you have to have, there's so many percent openings that you have to have in a naturally ventilated parking garage. Um, and so I've looked at that, and everything says that we can do it, um, I'm waiting for the drawings, and Mario and Brian have been helping me get ahold of those drawings of the actual parking garage. But if you go to the first floor, those windows aren't there.
Right.
And there's even less windows on each side, and so if you go to the second floor, there's more windows on the ends, more windows on the, on the side next to, uh, to the, to the park.
Right.
Uh, so all indications are is that we can probably block those off, uh, and not have any problems, um, and not have to worry about, you know, providing any extra ventilation and stuff like that, so.
Any other questions?
Pretty good to me.
Alright.
I think it's a great idea.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Aickles. Uh, moving on, new business, uh, Mr. Fetty, check write-offs for twenty nineteen?
Yeah, we, uh, per code, we have to, in added code, we have to write off checks that are older than two years old, so any outstanding check that the city has issued, uh, that's older than two years, we need to get a motion to write those things off, and if you can look there, you can pretty much see what funds each of the checks came out of. Are there any other questions with that or?
I have none, I'll make, make a motion.
We have a motion by Mr. Roulette to accept the check write-offs, and a second by Brett, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Alright, that's it for the new business, moving on to old business, I see none, does anybody have anything they want to bring up for old business? Hearing none, we'll move to the comments from the audience. Everybody's quiet.
Did, let me, did you guys all see these things that he showed us, what do you all think?
They're pretty nice.
Huh, you think it looks pretty good? I think it looks pretty neat, not this one, I'm talking about this one.
One thing is, uh, the road to go on the levy now, they don't have plans to close that, do they?
There's no plans to close that, then it's.
Bob P goes up there, you know, and he drives, drives, and then he takes them, we can see where that's behind the twelve.
Yeah, there, there have been rumors around about that, but the city council has never talked about doing that.
Well, there was discussion a few, a few meetings ago too, I think even last year, that.
Somebody asked, yeah.
Yeah.
Any other comments from the audience? Okay, hearing none, I'll take a motion for the approval of the claims.
So moved.
Make a motion. We approve the claims.
A motion from Lenny, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nobbert, all in favor?
Aye.
Pay the claims. Review and discussion of claims for board approval.
Do it same, the same as in the Board of Works, just the claims from the court's office, I believe.
Yeah, well, I got two of them, got review and discussion of claims for board approval, but we already did that. Is there a difference with the advanced claims? Okay, so we don't need to do that, alright, so, hearing nothing else, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Roulette.
Not all at once now.
Second by, second by Brett, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Ken.
Ken. Great evening.
Ken.